Good evening. We are ready to get started? Yeah, it is, but is, but I'm not, I don't have much of a presence. Okay, we'll get started. We'll call the order of this meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Urbana City Council for October 6, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey? Councilmember Colasetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
First item up is the approval of minutes from a previous meeting in September 15, 2025, a committee of the whole meeting minutes. Is there any substantial changes needed? Seeing none, will those in favor of passing the-
Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
I'll move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Okay. With that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Those minutes are sent to the city clerk for publish, publishing. Any additions to the agenda tonight?
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request that we remove Resolution Number 2025-10079R, Resolution Accepting the Assistance to the Firefighters Grant Program, AFG Funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, United States Department of Homeland Security.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Do I need a roll call vote? A voice vote will do? Okay, so all those in favor of taking that off the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. That will be removed from tonight's agenda. Next up is present- Next up is presentations and public input. I'm going to ask the public for their patience. We will have public input tonight, but first we have a very special Fire Department Promotions. Chief Dade, when you're ready, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Like to say good evening to everyone, council, Mayor Williams, all the members of the public who are here tonight, the UFD family and the extended family of those members who are here with us. And as always, as we've done over the last three years, we appreciate the opportunity to do what we've done, you know, and that's come here to the council meetings and publicly be able to celebrate the significance in the members of our careers, the significant moments for the members of our department. Tonight, we have five individuals, five dedicated individuals, who have successfully completed their first year of service. So they'll be transitioning from probationary status to that of full-fledged firefighter on the Urbana Fire Department. Additionally, we will also be celebrating two remarkable promotions for individuals who are going to be moving on to greater responsibility and greater authority. So the first thing I'm going to do is call up all five of those individuals who will be taking their oath. First is that Arnold Fox, firefighter Arnold Fox, better known as AJ, firefighter Robert Hardwick, firefighter Devin List, firefighter Nathaniel Mikulik, and firefighter Dawson Purvis. I could tell you that this past year for these gentlemen has been one that has tested their skills, their commitment, and their resilience. And I can tell you that all of them have proved that they have the professionalism that we look for here at the Urbana Fire Department. Tonight, when they take their oath, it'll be that of them declaring publicly what that, what they will be serving, what we'll be looking forward to them serving, and holding them accountable to for the public. So Mayor Williams will go ahead and leave them in their oath. Yeah, go ahead. Thought you had more speech. I didn't want to interrupt, chief. They didn't give me a lapel, you know? Thank you all for coming out. Congratulations. How y'all feeling? Good? All right. So I will have you all raise your right hand and repeat after me. Since they gave you the oath, they took our thunder, you should be all set. All right? You ready? All right. So I'm going to say aye, and then you state your name. Okay? Aye? You guys repeat after me, but then you state your name. All right, let's go again. All right. Aye?
Dawson Purvis.
Devin List.
Robert Hardwick.
Arnold Fox.
Do solemnly affirm- -that I will faithfully execute- -the duties of the position- -of firefighter for the city of Urbana- -in the county of Champagne, Illinois, and will- -to the best of my ability- -preserve, protect, and defend- -the Constitution and laws of the United States- -the state of Illinois- -and charter, and charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana- -acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana- -so hereby affirmed. Congratulations, gentlemen. They're going to sign, after they sign their oaths, they're going to come back up front, and we're going to have a, have them pinned by a significant loved one. So for AJ, his father Arnold is going to come up and pin him. His father has served 20 years on the Chicago Fire Department, and he'll come on up and he'll pin his son. For Robert Hardwick, tonight he's here, his girlfriend Emma's with him. He's going to be pinned by his father Rob, who's been the chief engineer for the Tuscola Fire Department for the last seven years. So Rob, come on up. Devin List will be pinned by his two sons, Easton and Carson. So if Easton and Carson could make their way on up. Firefighter Nathaniel Mikulik will be pinned by his father Fred. So Fred, if you come on up. And firefighter Dawson Purvis will be pinned by his wife Madison and his daughter Hattie. As they go next, we're going to bring up the two promotions individually. Advancing in rank is not just about titles. It's about the responsibility to lead and to guide and to pass along the knowledge and the traditions that make the fire service so special. So first up, Lieutenant Andrew Stewart. Lieutenant Andrew Stewart is a paramedic. He's been the treasurer for the pension board. He's also been, I'm sorry, not treasurer for pension board, but for our local union, 1147, he's also been the union president. He's been a T R T member, which is Technical Rescue Team member, and he's on the training committee. After he takes his oath tonight, he will be pinned by his daughter, Tater. So you've done this a time or two. All right. So, all right. Aye?
Aye. Andy Stewart.
Do solemnly affirm- -that I will faithfully execute the duties- -of the position of lieutenant for the city of Urbana in Champagne County.
Of the duties of position of lieutenant for the city of Urbana and the county of Champagne, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability-
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend.
-the Constitution and laws of the United States-
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
-the state of Illinois-
State of Illinois.
-and the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana-
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
-acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana-
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
-so hereby affirmed. While Andy's signing, he's going to be accompanied by his wife Whitney and his son Walker, even though Tate, better known as Tater, is going to pin her daddy. And I wanted to fail, I almost failed to mention that his wife Whitney is also a firefighter for the Champagne Fire Department. Next, we're going to bring up Battalion Chief Matt Innes. Matt Innes has been with us since September of 2002, and he started his career doing ride-alongs and internships through the high school program. He's a TRT member, he's an EMT intermediate, and Matt is the most resilient firefighter that has ever served on the Urbana Fire Department. And we all know what that means. Tonight, after he reads his oath, he will be pinned by his best friend Kurt Sexton, though his wife Erin and daughter Haley are also here in attendance. Raise your right hand. So I'll say aye, and you say your name. Aye?
Aye. Matthew Innes.
Do solemnly affirm- -that I will faithfully execute- -the duties of the position of- Battalion Chief for the city of Urbana in the county of Champagne- Illinois and will- -to the best of my ability- -preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution- -and laws of the United States, the state of Illinois- -and the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana- -acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana- -so hereby affirmed. Congratulations, sir. That concludes what we have for the Fire Department, but I will say, since Chief Boone has been here, for those of you who know me, I'm getting a little bit louder because, as we know, that's the mark of a great leader. So, thanks, Chief Boone.
Thank you, and congratulations to all the honored firefighters. You're welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, you can too. And us, the clerk, will wait a few minutes to clear. Okay, we will now go to public input. Given that there's a lot of people here tonight, could I see a show of hands, and could you hold them up just to see how many are plan on going to give public input? I know you will. Okay, we got it. Okay. So, so when you come up, you get five minutes, and please state your name for the record. So first person that would like to give public input, the microphone and floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Derek Bries. I'm a resident of Urbana in Ward Four, here to talk about the alternative response. First off, just want to say thank you. I think it's a really big deal that we're this far along. And it's because people do care. Now, as you'll probably hear later on, I don't know that everybody cares enough, but we all have that base level of care about where we live, right? Where we call home. And I don't think that would be the case. That, we wouldn't be here today if that were not the case. So I do want to say, I really appreciate this opportunity. I think it's a really big opportunity for Urbana to do something very powerful, and especially for its least privileged residents. Because there's quite a few of them, right? Alternative response is desperately needed. We don't have a crime problem in Urbana. We don't have a crime problem in Illinois despite what our president wants to say. We don't even have a crime problem in this country, right? Crime is on a decline across the board. I mean, you could just look at UPD's own reports. In 2013, there was over 30,000 calls for service. In 2022, just under 19,000. And also, four less officers in 2013, when there were over 30,000 calls for service. There were 7,700-ish police reports filed in 2014, again with only 55 sworn officers, down to 40, 5,400 in 2020 with 59 sworn officers. The same with physical arrests. I mean, down drastically. There's an inverse relationship that's very clear here. As crime decreases, overall, our police force increases. And that's not unique to Urbana. That's not unique to Champagne County. We can see the militarization of a police across the country, and we've seen it for decades. What we have is a poverty problem. People with money do not go to jail. Only poor people go to jail. Jail is a poor person's problem, particularly a poor black person's problem. Boys who grow up in families in the bottom 10% of the income bracket are 20 times more likely to go to jail than children from more well-off families. Three years prior to incarceration, only 49% of men are employed. Three years before incarceration. And those that are employed, their median earnings are under $7,000 a year. In 2024, 29% of black children lived in poverty. Right now, 28% of Urbana lives in poverty. It's hard to imagine. The poverty rate for an individual is like $16,000 a year. The average rent in Urbana is about $1,200. So 90% of your income would be going to rent. These are the people that are winding up in jail, and this is why we need alternative response. We can't arrest our way out of this because it's not a crime problem. It's the wrong solution. It's, it's, it's police saying, give me more money, give me more resources. It's an answer in search of a problem when we know what the real problem is. People are hungry, people are desperate, and they need better opportunities and they need more resources. They don't need more police. More police isn't going to make us any safer. It just isn't. Because you're not going to make these people somehow not poor. You're not going to make them somehow not desperate by going to jail. One-third of people who go to jail end up in jail again. It is not a system that works. We have to do something different, and alternative response is a great first step, right? It keeps those situations from getting escalated. It keeps these people's lives from being ruined by a situation getting out of hand. And we really have to take that seriously. We have to be building bridges and not walls. Sending out a cop with a bulletproof vest and a firearm and a taser is a wall. That is not a bridge. We need to have open hearts, open minds, and to come to this with everything on the table. Because we have real problems. We know what those problems are. That data's available to all of you. I mean, I've told you about a million times, so you probably remember it anyway, just from that. But that's our problem. And alternative response is a great first step. Let's not criminalize the poor any more than they already are, in this city and in this country.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Rush. Good evening. My name is Reverend Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood, and I'm a lifelong resident of Urbana community. I lived here when they hired the first black police officer. And I'm part of the Ellis Drive Six that desegregated the Urbana Schools District in one, in 1966. I'm a former school board member who was elected in 1968. My continued goal is for the African-American community to have equal representation in the city of Urbana. This has finally come to fruition with the mayor, police chief, and fire chief, all black. Even though this is historical, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't hold these officers accountable. I believe in my heart that the alternative response team needs to be implemented in the city of Urbana. Many different cities across the United States adopted clinicians-led community response teams because of the increased killings of people in mental health crisis at the hand of the police nationwide. One out of every five call police responded to involve an element of behavioral health, and more than 20% of the people killed at the hands of police have had a non-mental health diagnosis. According to TAC, capital T-A-C, Treatment Advocacy Center, one study suggests that people with untreated mental health illnesses are 16 times more likely to be killed by police than other people like cities in Indianapolis, Eugene, Oregon, Denver, Colorado, and Milwaukee have teams that respond to mental health-related calls without law enforcement. Please consider the implementation of any of these hybrid programs. Also, study the 21st Century Cures Act passed by Congress and signed by President Obama on December 20, December 2016. The law included a mandate for the U.S. Attorney General to collect and report data on the role of serious mental illness in fatal law enforcement encounters. These statistics will allow you to ensure transparency and updated data in order to implement the system. Keep in mind, the same way Urbana changed the course of history with mayor, police chief, and fire chief, all being black, use that same energy to make a difference in the disabled community and protect our residents. This system, like the others across the nation, must have the designated oversight, remain in the control of parties on our healthcare umbrella, and not law enforcement. Then and only then can we protect the transparency and integrity of the program and the people it is intended to serve. Respectfully submitted, Reverend Evelyn B. Underwood, J.D., Ph.D. Thank you.
Well, since I have the mic, I'll say, I'm Jane McClintock, and I can't say anything that eloquent, but thank you for working on this. I'm excited to see what comes of it.
Hi, my name's Stephen McGuire. So, I think there is a need for an alternative response task force. And part of the reason Dr. Underwood pointed out, 50%, I think you said 60, but I, I heard 50, I'm not sure what the actual statistic is, but of lethal encounters with police involve people with mental health issues. Also, communities of color are particularly at risk. So we have to ask why? And why was Tamir Rice playing with a toy gun when a cop came like a bat out of hell and shot him within two seconds? When, I remember playing with toy guns as a kid, no cop ever shot me. And I think the answer is in the culture of militarization and the culture of the police as a whole. For a long while, I did CIT training as part of NAMI with the police. But something that you quickly find when it comes to the mental health system of the United States of America is that it's not really set up to care for people who have mental health issues. It is set up to provide the illusion of care, all the while mitigating legal liability. And I think CIT training and the police are part of that culture. And if we want to change the culture so we have better services, we should take some of these calls that the police are not especially good at out of their hands. Maybe if it's a call with people who have mental health issues, a social worker should be brought in. Maybe if it's a domestic dispute, police can sit outside, be present to make sure everyone's safe, but that a social worker should take the key step. Maybe if it's something involving drugs, instead of criminalizing individuals. And I think an alternative task response is necessary because we need a different culture about how we respond to these problems. Something that is not militarized and, and not lazy. Anyway, thank you.
Paul Muth, Illinois Street in Urbana. I did send in remarks because I wasn't sure I was going to make it on time, but maybe I'll just sort of extemporize on them. I urge you to do all, in all your power, to emphasize alternative responses to the kind of police actions we've seen in too many circumstances. In the past, LEAP representatives in their series of public meetings over at IMC, the Dayton Police Chief was one of the LEAP group, and he emphasized that in no, in no terms should, in no way should the crisis response team be in the police force. It should be in a separate public health districts in some cities, things like that. And critical response training for both the Police Department and this aforementioned alternative response unit, maybe they could be held jointly so people can get to know each other. Something that is in the model in Minneapolis, in other cities, best practices are having, one thing that stuck out with me in some of the reporting a while back when Minneapolis rolled out their, their system, was counseling for officers. It is a stressful job. We have to take that into account. But I think it would help in, maybe reduce the use of sick leave and help improve responses while they're in the field. So that's pretty much it. But on another note, I told the mayor a while back that I was going to bring up the building of the nuclear plant over on Oak Street in Urbana, in Champagne by the, by the University of Illinois. I'm very stressed out by this, thinking about putting my house up on the market, that kind of thing. There's an article in this Public Eye that I wrote about that, and I'll bring it up on another occasion. Some people don't even know they're going to do it. I mean, it's, it's not been discussed very much. And it's a modular reactor. They can build it somewhere else and test it, and then move it in if they really have to have it. They should be, they should stop burning coal and gas in that plant, that's for sure. But, but- But a nuclear plant, no thanks.
My name is Chris Zelli. I'm a lifelong resident of the Champaign-Urbana community. I'm here today with a couple concerns, mostly about the structural way that we set up this crisis response moving forward. As we've heard from a bunch of people, it really needs to be isolated from the police department. I don't want a world where people think they're calling the cops every time they're calling 911, that when they need an emergency help, that an armed violent person is going to show up as part of that help. A very disproportionate amount of the calls that go to Metcalf are for police service. And of that, for criminal events, a very small percentage. Getting these calls away from the police and having that system set up away from the police allows for the culture to shift naturally. Instead of trying to reform culture inside of a management system, inside of a union system that is regressive and doesn't want to change, take away their work, build that culture to do the work without them separately. And in that, we can rebuild trust in the community. We can rebuild people feeling safe, calling for help. And I mean, if we want to talk about dollars to donuts, overtime calls for overtime burden is proportionally tied to service calls more for the police than it is for your emergency or fire. And as we've seen, they're very bad about their budget explaining to you where their overtime comes from, very sloppy work. And it's a lot of overtime. It's very disrespectful when the fire department comes in with really great budgets about their overtime, and the police can just walk in, ask for more money, not talk at all really about their overtime. And it's directly pertinent here because it's being caused. I don't know our city specifics here, but nationwide, considerably four times as much overtime for the police is caused from these calls as it is for medical or fire. If we want to, I understand they have some mixed relationship where they love overtime and say they hate it at the same time, but let's take the overtime away from them, let's not overwork them, let's not have them responding to a bunch of calls that they don't need to be at and don't have good training for and can't get that training in a few weeks of courses. Let's make their job easier, let's take the responsibility away from them, and let's rebuild community trust. And I really think that you guys have a great opportunity, a really great place to start doing those. It's going to take more work over the years, but there's more calls we can take away from them that they aren't the best to respond to. But we have some very vulnerable populations that we can affect first, and it would be really negligent, morally bankrupt, to not take this opportunity. Thank you very much for your time.
Danielle Shuneliff, 412 West Illinois Street. I serve as the Township Supervisor. I'm going to speak both as supervisor and as myself. First, I want to thank Chandra, who's not able to be here with us tonight, and Jaia, who really kicked this off. Everyone on council has participated and has been so supportive of a vision for alternative response. And I want to thank the mayor, who ran on the platform of establishing alternative response. I think we're long overdue, we're a visionary community, and this shows our vision. Township is receiving about 2,000 calls for service each month. We are overwhelmed with calls, and I think, as speakers said before, a lot of what we're dealing with in our community is poverty. And so I think we have to look at alternative response, police response, alternative response, and meeting poverty and dealing with the housing crisis kind of all together. I want to share a story. We work with very vulnerable participants. The majority of participants we work with have some form of disability. Many of them are seniors. Almost all of them have experienced some level of significant trauma. We were working with a person who had experienced significant trauma, had a mental health disability. And essentially, we worked with her over the course of six months. She was in our emergency hotel program. There was, we worked very well together. There was a time when she started to become escalated and was threatening our staff. At point, she started threatening folks in the places she was staying. We called the police, and we worked together, actually, the police and our cares team game planned, how do we deal with this? And so the patrol officers and our staff really worked together to figure out, our staff are going to go forward, we're going to meet with her, we're going to ask her what she needs, because she had a warrant out for arrest, and we wanted her to peacefully be arrested and brought to a mental health facility where she had already been. That was the plan for her. And so our staff negotiated, she didn't want to have the locks on her hands, she felt very traumatized by that. She didn't want men near her, she wanted her to know her things were going to be reunited with her. And so we basically helped to accompany her, to get her to the mental health facility working with the police department. And I just wanted to go and to show you, alternative response looks like a lot of different things. And I felt like that was this really successful model. She just came by our office. She is now engaging with medication, she has a place to stay, we helped get her a bus ticket to Southern Illinois to reunite with her family. We're very happy with that situation. And that's an example of the kinds of things that could have happened. She could have been shot. I mean, based on her behavior, she was very much in danger of being harmed. She was not in her right mind, and she would have been harmed if she had interacted with folks potentially who were not social workers, who knew how to care for her mental health. So it can work. I want to, I want to say that because I work with all the jurisdictions, sheriffs, Champaign, U of I, Urbana, each one is doing a different thing. And I wish and I would hope that Alternative Response Task Force might actually be a way to bring jurisdictions together from the different places to talk a little bit about what we're learning. A lot of what's happening is happening within the police department. I would like to see Urbana do different and better and work on and look at the best practices, because most often it's outside of the police department, while the police can also take steps to engage in community engagement and to engage with a co-response model, et cetera. So I'd like to see that piece. Lastly, I just want to put a word in for field mediation. There's actually a grant I will send to the city that is for funding to do technical assistance for field mediation that could thread really well with the LEAP engagement, and it's due October 17th. I just found out about it. So I will send it to you. But we have Dispute Resolution Institute in our community that does court-based rental assistance. We work closely with them. They're not currently on the Alternative Response Task Force. I would like to encourage us to invite them, at least to participate in some way, and really add field mediation to one of those pieces, based on the Barrett-Dutton Report that says that noise and music are the top calls for service to the police. Thank you for your time.
Hi there, City Council. My name is Ben Jocelyn. I first, I'm a resident here. First, I want to say thank you for doing this alternative police response, or alternative public safety. I think it's really important, and I do hope that it continues to live outside of the police department so that the city and civilians can have more control over their affirmative safety in this city. I really, yeah, once again, thank you for the work that you're doing on that. I do think it's really important that when we consider public safety, we mention the sort of terror that's going on around immigration. And I want to point out some of the work that's being proposed by Zorn Mondami, a mayoral candidate in New York and his Department of Public Safety, and the measures being taken by Brandon Johnson up in Chicago, who today signed a mayoral decree that said that ICE agents are not allowed to use vacant lots, parking lots, and other city property in order to sort of stage ICE actions. And I want to encourage us to look at what measures might make sense for us here in Urbana. I also want to thank the City Council for its vote towards a ceasefire in Gaza and Palestine. The, just this last week, we had civilian boats sailing in international waters, and one of the women sitting here today has a cousin who's currently sitting in Israeli detention, having been trying to bring baby food and water to starving children. And so I want to thank you for sort of taking a stand, even though it's desperate and gut-wrenching and awful. I think that the action that you took is important in how we move forward, and I thank you for that vote years ago, and I hope that we can continue to move forward as a city and trying to work towards peace there. Yeah, thanks so much.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Hello, my name is Erie. I've been an Urbana resident for coming up on five years now. I support the formation of an alternative response task force. I think that is a very commendable initiative. All of the statistics that we've heard from, I think, inform the decision to create a different response to criminal behavior. My hometown, Elgin, had a bit of a similar crisis many years ago, in which they were forced with the decision to expand their police force. And I disagreed strongly with that decision. I made sure they knew that I disagreed, and they went forward with the expansion of their police force. And now the social problems in my hometown have gotten significantly worse. So there's a reason I live here now, and I would like for that to continue to be the case. So I would like to see this community thrive. There are many caring individuals and organizations that, I believe, do great work towards creating a better community. When it comes to the Alternative Response Task Force, I would like to see really two big things out of it. Number one, I would like to see the de-formalization of punishment or sanctions for what we would consider to be criminal behavior. I think that there are better ways of getting people to change who they are as people and how they relate to each other. A very brief study of psychology will show that simply punishing people is not the best or even effective at changing their behavior. So I would like to see a de-formalization. For example, a network of trusted individuals who people can come to to help them resolve their interpersonal disputes. I would also like to see a big educational component to this task force. I don't think that this should just be a hotline that people call when they have problems, but a community of people who can share information with each other. For example, skills like conflict resolution. That's really not something that people are explicitly taught, and there's so much data and science behind it. I got my degree in communication from the university, so I got to learn a lot about it. And there's a lot that people just don't get taught about. I would like to see this Alternative Response Task Force have that component in there as well. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay, seeing none, that will close. Oh, wait, we got reading. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so who would like to read some input? Go ahead.
All right. To Mayor DeShawn Williams and all City Council members, please read this into the record. I am a resident of Dr. Ellis subdivision and would like to express a few thoughts I have concerning the Alternative Response Task Force. I understand this unit was developed in the year 2002, and this is 2025. We have 23 years into this already. What happened? Did this program get dropped somewhere along the way? Regardless, in 2025, I believe the community is the key component of this program. It is important for the residents of each area to unite and become self-sustainable and operate as a unit in that area. The people of the neighborhoods must become more involved and participate in the functions of their surroundings and be able to thrive in times of necessity. A willing sacrifice must be made for the development of self-preservation. It can be very dangerous sending unknown individuals into a personal situation to help straighten a personal mess also. Other law enforcements or services have to come. The residents are already there and aware of their neighbor's lifestyle. Examples should be given from a moral structure and point of view on a daily basis and not send in some unknown to invade privacy unless absolutely necessary. A good trained neighbor can be just as beneficial and trusted with no educational degrees required. There must be training, communication, and interaction to help facilitate a well-run program and increase the level of our success, which will be. It is, it is time, actually, it is past time to make this happen. A person must have self-care as a strong value in their life in order to survive and know when and how to receive help. To just give a person what they are asking for is not always the best way to help them, but giving an opportunity to learn how to utilize their resources to benefit from what they are already, what they already have. I am certain that seriously involving the community in their own safety and well-being and in a well-informed and secure environment will promote the awareness needed to develop a strong and actively thriving community. We have strong, capable people in our neighborhoods. We have to express why it is so important to come forth now, because we are going to need each other, and we must begin to practice it now. Formally incarcerated individuals will follow a different format or program for a period of time until fully released and have become self-supporting. Thank you for all your attention to the public's input on this matter, because all people are not what society has deemed crazy. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Darlene Bailey.
All right. Please read this public input out loud and include in the meeting minutes. All right. Urbana City Council, the mayor slash city council's strategic goals 2024-2025 make it explicit that strategic area number one is public safety and well-being, including the strategies of, one, pursuing methods to mitigate community violence, two, enhance and expand public safety resources, and three, promote community well-being. Citation, but there is a link to the Illinois government webpage. The biggest threat to these goals of public safety and well-being could rapidly become deployment of U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, along with the National Guard within our community. As has been widely reported, and as the city council and mayor are no doubt aware, ICE has been deployed in Chicago. In addition, the National Guard from Texas has been activated to aid and protect, I'm sorry, to aid and protect ICE operations in Illinois. A false sense of national emergency has been manufactured to target areas with liberal majorities. In fact, ICE operation Midway Blitz, focusing on the state of Illinois, is publicly stated as being done in honor of Katie Abraham, whose life was taken in a car accident on University Ave in January 2025. The City of Urbana is typically the second most liberal, the City of Urbana is typically the second most liberal area in the state of Illinois after Chicago. For this reason, along with the mission being named for an incident that took place in Urbana, the only reasonable assumption is that it is possibly to even likely that ICE and National Guard operations could be done locally. This is not an opportunity to speak or study the issue. This is an opportunity to take proactive action to, in line with the strategic goals, protect the fundamental public safety and well-being of the people in Urbana. Questions include: What is the city's authority in dealing with ICE and the National Guard? Two, how will the presence of ICE and the National Guard be communicated and conveyed to the public? And three, what if any, are the responsibilities of city staff and divisions, including the police, fire department, public works, and others when ICE and the National Guard are active in Urbana? Make no mistake, this is a now issue that the city must take up in order to be caught, in order to be caught unprepared. I strongly urge emergency action to make it clear that these activities are not welcome in Urbana, including: Public education for individuals regarding their rights on topics such as communicating, identifying, and allowing entry into residents' places of businesses and houses of worship; clear legal training for city employees regarding the level, if any, of cooperation if is required.
any, of cooperation if is required; communication to the community regarding specifically what if any ways the Urbana Police Department will engage or disengage with ICE and National Guard operations; indeed, a city resolution codifying and funding A, B, and C, and reaffirming the city's opposition to ICE and the National Guard operations; and making it clear that no city funding, personnel, or facilities can be used in the targeting of community members by ICE and the National Guard, going beyond the resolutions in the 2026 establishing Urbana as a sanctuary city. Ryan Franks, 806 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois 61801. And last one. All right. Please read this statement into the record. Dear Mayor and City Council, just as a reminder, based on research that prefigures the conversation tonight with leap, most calls for service received by the city could be responded to by someone without a sidearm, a taser, and pepper spray, and without an assault rifle in their car. We might call this an alternative response model, but I want us to start making the distinction between traditional policing and nonviolent policing. More than leaving the weapons behind, nonviolent policing is about effective communication, cultural competence, and trauma-informed care. And the people with these skills and expertise will be keeping the peace just like traditional police. In this spirit, I'd like to offer a few recommendations. From the beginning, what should our nonviolent police be paid? The same salaries and benefits as traditional police. From the beginning, how should our nonviolence police be supported? With a freestanding department within the city's governing structure, their own supervisor, their own ladder of promotion, their own relationship to the mayor's office. Down the road, what should we expect our nonviolent police department? That it will grow in personnel and purview, even as traditional policing shrinks in size. Down the road, what will our nonviolent police department expect from us? Instead of only responding to calls, they will build networks of care that support the community before a crisis occurs. For instance, they will be the ones leading the conversation about community and policing. Even further down the road, I want to challenge the city and the folks building this new model to promote nonviolent police training at the state level, just as academies work in 16-week training periods to recharge municipal police forces. We should plan for a coalition of Illinois cities to support a centralized training program for nonviolent police responders. Long-term investments in nonviolent policing should be felt at the state level, and we can advocate for that now. Finally, let me say how much I appreciate what's been done to reach this point. I'm especially grateful for the folks who are doing the research and having the discussions on our behalf. Thank you for your righteous labor. Sincerely, Ron Coester, 1209 West Oregon, Urbana.
Go ahead.
And I have a couple to read as well. Dear Mayor Williams and council members Wu, Evans, Hershey, Colasetti, Bishop, Wilkett, and Quisenberry, my name is Lila Leopold, and I'm a resident of Urbana Ward Four. I'm out of town today and would be grateful if you read my public comment aloud, if time allows. Sincere things in advance. Urbana needs alternate response. We really need an alternative response task force. You're hearing tonight, and not for the first time, many solid reasons why, of which there are no shortage. You have huge support from across Urbana, its organizations and businesses for this work. We deserve to try things that are going to make everyday life better for everyone in Urbana. This is a huge, crucial piece of this puzzle and has been years in the making. Taking a shortcut through the hiring of one person through the police department alone will not ensure this kind of work is done. Exploring a true alternative response program in Urbana at large has the potential to free up police officers to serve their community in the ways most aligned with their training. Alternative response in Urbana means making our city more able to offer services to alleviate the full spectrum of hardship people in Urbana are facing. And we all hear in these council chambers about how our existing organizations in place to help those in need are operating beyond what their budgets can support. The opportunity to participate in a police force somewhere that has an alternative response task force would also offer all police workers the chance to be at the forefront of policing models in this country. Seems like something worth trying, given retention rates being what they are. This could be an impactful and meaningful part of the extended working environment. Urbana can offer all city and local workers in a way that enriches their careers and community lives. Isn't that something we all can, we can all agree on? Thank you sincerely, Lila Leopold. And then finally, dear city council, so actually, that one's not marked to read out loud, so never mind, that's it.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that concludes all of the ones at least received prior to 6:30 that I was aware of that explicitly asked to be read aloud, but please double-check, I haven't been in front of a computer since 6:30.
There's another one that came in, but it doesn't specifically say to read it out loud, so we'll just make assurance, include it in the minutes.
Okay, I'm going to offer one last chance to the in-person folks. Does anybody else want to do public input? Seeing none, that will close public input, and we will go on to new business. First item is Resolution Number 2025-10-076R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community development block grant subrecipient agreement with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, the tenant-based rental assistance management for FY '26. And you, sir, have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nick Olson. I'm the interim manager of the City of Urbana Grants Division. I'm actually going to speak about, if it's all right, items number one and two under new business together, as they're closely related. They're funding agreements for the same program through the same agency. So just to provide a bit of background, starting with item number two, this is an agreement that would provide $300,000 in home investment partnership funds to Champaign County Regional Planning Commission to support its tenant-based rental assistance program. Just a little background on the home investment partnerships program, the city receives an annual allocation through the Department of Housing and Urban Development for this program, and these funds can be used for a variety of purposes related to affordable housing, which includes rental assistance as well as new housing development. We have been partnering with RPC through the home program with its tenant-based rental assistance program for over 10 years. Through this program, RPC provides up to two years of rental assistance to income-qualifying households. RPC limits this to households earning no more than 60% of the area median income. RPC is currently spending down funds from a prior-year agreement and would be able to tap into the funds in this agreement once those funds are exhausted. We've traditionally staggered passage of these agreements to ensure consistency of service as clients who are receiving assistance move between funding and these agreements. So funds in this agreement that is before you this evening would be, again, available as soon as the current agreement that they're drawing from is exhausted, and then would remain available until June 30 of 2028. And then in addition to item number two, which is the agreement for home funds, item number one would provide RPC with $75,000 in community development block grant funds to cover case management expenses for the RPC staff who serve their rental assistance clients. Case management for tenant-based rental assistance clients is something that we have funded through CDBG funds in the past, with our most recent case management agreement expiring on June 30 of 2025. So this would effectively renew the city's support for this component of their services. Staff are recommending approval, and note that support for these programs is consistent with council goals related to preventing homelessness in Urbana, as well as supporting rental assistance resources. We also note that it is consistent with the budget and goals that were outlined in the city's consolidated plan and action plan, which guide our local use of HUD funds, and which was passed by council in June of 2025. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Mary Alice.
Thank you, Nick. Is this your first time addressing us as interim?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. Couple of questions. The first one is, we're the home agency for home, right? And so home covers the entire region, it doesn't just cover Urbana. So the $300,000, would that, the people eligible would be within the entire region because of that? Is that correct?
That's correct. So for the home funds, which would all be going entirely to rental assistance, that could be anyone in the consortium area, which consists of Urbana, Champaign, and then unincorporated Champaign County. For the CDBG funds, since those are given to us as a municipality, those would need to be limited to case management services for Urbana residents specifically.
Okay, all right. So yeah, that was my next question, because CDBG funds are specific to Urbana. And then just looking at the memo here, the estimate in terms of rental assistance is 10 to 15 households. It also says, and Courage Connection estimates 6 to 10 households. So is my question, can you add those two, or is it 6 to 10 within the 10 to 15?
I believe the reference to Courage Connection might have been left in from an, or should have been removed from an earlier draft.
So it is only 10 to 15?
There is no agreement for Courage Connection before you this evening. They do receive assistance through the home program, but have an existing agreement for those services. But just to clarify, I would say the estimate for these funds would be somewhere around 15 clients to be served through this program, although it is, the level of assistance is, there's a calculation that's based on the household size, that household's income, and then the rent for that unit. So it can vary from household to household.
And so you had mentioned that this would not go into effect until they had spent down the previous one. Do you know approximately how much money is left, and also how much time it took for them to expend that amount?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I believe their current agreement takes us through at least the end of this fiscal year, but I can check on those numbers and follow back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. Also want to say thanks, Nick, for picking up some of the responsibilities in the interim. So if I could just clarify, so you said $75,000 for the case management, right, and $300,000 for direct rental assistance?
That's correct.
And I guess just kind of general, bigger-picture question on just if there's any changes that you're aware of in some of the strings attached to federal funding? Yeah, I don't see any particular red flags in this one. They do talk about equal opportunity employment and nondiscrimination, which is apparently also interpreted as no DEI in city activities, and just want to be sure that, I think, as we're aware and have prepared for in the budget, that when we're getting federal money, that it's not against our city values, laws, and state laws. So just wondering if you're aware of any additional or changes in the strings attached to HUD money at this point?
Yeah, that's a good question, and it's a question that we're looking at regularly. Right now, I would say that it's an evolving landscape, and it's something that we're regularly consulting with the city attorney about. We're not anticipating major changes to our programs as they are currently structured, but like I said, it's something that we're keeping tabs on and continuing to have conversations with the city attorney. I will say that direct guidance from HUD has been somewhat unclear. So again, it's just something that we have to keep tabs on, but our intent is to thread the needle between getting these funds to the folks who need them while ensuring that we're remaining consistent with local policies.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, make the motion.
Please.
I will move Resolution Number 2025-10076R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community development block grant subrecipient agreement with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, TBRA management for fiscal year 2026. Onto the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Grace.
I'll just again say thank you for your work in that department and carrying things there. I'm glad to see this money getting out where it's needed and looking forward to what else we can do with getting out all the budgeted money to where it's needed most as fast as we can. So thank you.
Anybody else? This is not final action, so we can take a voice vote. So all in favor of Resolution Number 2025-10-076R, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That will go on to the consent agenda next week. Would you like them? Yeah, would you?
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2025-10077R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement with the Champaign Regional Planning Commission Tenant-Based Rental Assistance for Fiscal Year 2026.
For the consent agenda?
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Jaya again.
Grace.
I'm sorry, Grace. Mary Alice, move. Grace, seconded. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That goes to the consent agenda. Last item of new business is Resolution Number 2025-10-078R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for rental assistance between the City of Urbana and Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office for Fiscal Year '26. And Nick, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So this is an agreement that would provide $58,000 in community development block grant funds to Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office to support emergency rental assistance. Under CDBG guidelines, emergency rental assistance can be provided for up to three consecutive months of rent expenses or arrears to income-qualifying households. This would really be targeted at households facing imminent risk of eviction or homelessness. In the city's most recent consolidated plan and action plan, these are things that were identified as high priorities to address, and then the current year's annual action plan budget included $58,000 to be used for emergency rental assistance. So this is kind of just following up on that with a formal agreement. Under CDBG guidelines, this is considered a public service activity. Expenditures of public service activities through the community development block grant are capped at 15% of our annual allocation, which this year came out to approximately $58,000. So just a little reference on where that number came from. Cunningham Township does have an existing emergency rental assistance program that serves Urbana residents. These resources, as you heard, tend to be in pretty high demand, so this would increase the capacity of clients that they're able to serve. Again, staff are recommending approval, noting its consistency with council goals related to preventing homelessness, providing rental assistance, as well as the goals and budgets outlined in our consolidated plan and action plan. Happy to take any questions. And then Danielle from Cunningham Township is also here.
Mary Alice.
So Nick, I know under previous agreements, we've had different processes in terms of people applying. So there's the, is it HHI? Is that the acronym for the homeless?
That's correct.
Okay. So what was the process in this case?
So there was not an open RFP for this grant agreement. I think our logic with that was just the fit in terms of it being a fairly small amount of funds, but then this being an existing program that's in high demand that we could supplement, and also already having a clientele that was limited to residents of the City of Urbana was kind of the logic for why there wasn't a broader call. It was sort of too small of a pool of funds to make an RFP really seem worth it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does. I just recall when we were going through the ARPO conversations, that there were other agencies that were also interested in rental assistance.
It's definitely something we can look at moving forward.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Grace.
Again, thanks for the work here and the township for taking on getting out extra rental assistance money. And this is a reimbursement agreement, is that right, up to $58,000?
That's correct.
And this also varies the payment depending on the person's income and rental needs?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else for questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
You want me to make a motion, Chris? I'll make a motion. I will move Resolution Number 2025-10078R, resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for rental assistance between the City of Urbana and Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office, first fiscal year 2026. Onto the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya, moved Moved to the consent agenda. Discussion. Seeing none, we will vote here. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That moves on clerk to the consent agenda, and that concludes new business. We now have a staff report, and that takes us to a focus group led by Law Enforcement Action Partnership. You can have a seat. And I've asked the mayor to maybe say some opening remarks.
Yes. So first off, want to say thank you to the community members who have stayed alongside us as we get ready to present this information. But this moment marks an important milestone for our community as a whole, the official formal launch of the Alternative Response Task Force. Obviously, everyone, you know, it's no secret getting to this point has taken, you know, real commitment, collaboration, and a shared belief in doing things differently, doing things right, and doing things better. So I am encouraged and appreciate the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, also known as LEAP, being here. So the floor is yours. So thank you all.
Thank you. All righty. Again, thank you so much to city leadership for getting us here this far. I remember it being a year ago, as someone mentioned, and meeting virtually and talking about what this could look like here in Urbana. So it is amazing to see how much we've gotten so far. And with that being said, I also want to thank our collaborators who have been working with us diligently since the contract has been signed, Darius, Darcy, Bridget. Thank you so much. By the way, those yard signs look good, and I was fangirling today. So truly appreciate the collaboration. With that being said, I'm gonna introduce myself. So my name is Deontay Martin, but I go by D. So please, throughout this facilitation, please feel free to call me D, especially as the pronunciation and spelling of my name oftentimes confuses people. So I am okay with either or. My pronouns are she, hers, and hers. I am from New Orleans, Louisiana, but I am no stranger to this state. I did go to Notre Dame, so I frequent the borders all the time, and I love a little Midwest getaway. So very grateful to be here in person with you all. I have been a program specialist with LEAP going on three years now. Super grateful to be in this space and just help cities design models that really improve public safety. So with that being said, I'll give the mic over to Chief Tom.
Thank you very much. My name's Tom Thompson.
Is it on?
Looks like it's green.
Pull it close.
No, now it's very green. It was faded green. He had to clarify that for me. So my name's Tom Thompson. I have been with LEAP for about five years as a consultant and a speaker. I spent about 30 years in law enforcement at the municipal level, healthcare, and college in Ohio. I now reside near Houston, Texas, most of the time. But also in Ohio, I think one of the things that really struck me about you guys here was your focus on immigration and immigrants. And my wife and I, my wife who happened to come here with me tonight, she's back there, we have a nonprofit in Ohio where we worked with, for about the last six years now, we worked with maybe between 1,000 and 1,500 people immigrating to the United States every year, whether it's helping them through court processes, connecting to food and healthcare and housing and education. We spent a lot of time doing that after we adopted our oldest son from the Central African Republic. So I see you guys are passionate about that here, and I appreciate that. I do. And so we are very thankful to be here tonight, and we are wanting to do a couple things, very simple. We're gonna talk about what the scope of what we have been tasked to do here in Urbana. We want to understand, so we're gonna do more listening probably than talking, or we'll respond to different things you guys might say, ask, but understand you guys' priorities through our, some questioning in a focus group. And then we'll open it up for some questions and answers at the end as well. So first of all, what we're going to do is we're going to recommend an alternative response model. Now, what that is will be through, what we'll recommend will be through work that we do with you guys to find out what is unique and what fits best in Urbana. And we do that through looking vigorously through calls for service and evaluating those calls for service. But we also will hold focus groups, in-person meetings, and get a lot of information that way as well. Another thing that we'll do is we're gonna provide an M-DEATH report on what our finding is, based on a lot of the listening touchpoints and community feedback that we have. And basically, feedback, we're talking about public safety concerns from all aspects of the community. And then we're gonna engage the community in a lot of different ways here tonight at council. We may very well come again to council, I'm sure, if you guys ask, we'll be here. But we're gonna start engaging community groups within the next month, and we'll be engaging public safety, police, fire, other stakeholders in the area that will be very pertinent in building an effective response model. So I'll give you the three questions first, and then I'll give them one at a time. So the first question that we're gonna ask is, what outcomes would you like to see from an alternate response model? Now, this is kind of difficult for me to read, by the way, because my glasses will work for that one, but they won't work for that one. And so I'm kind of like right in between using glasses and not using glasses. No, 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 we're good. The second is, what concerns do you guys have about creating an alternate response model? And the third question is, what kind of information would be particularly helpful in making decisions about an alternative response model program? So we'll start with the first question, throw it out to you guys, and we're gonna take notes, and we'll also answer questions, if you have them, based on these questions. But first of all, what outcomes, city council, would you guys like to see from an alternative response model?
And you're really asking us now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So does anybody have any answers or desires for outcomes? Okay, Grace?
Yeah, and we're okay with this discussion format in a staff report?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because a little caught off guard with, if this was a presentation, usually a staff report is not quite so interactive. So we haven't seen these questions and weren't aware that we'd be answering them on the spot. And we have put a lot of thought into this over the years and put out the RFP that has a lot of this kind of general information officially from the city. But I'd say, given this question here now, I'd say that overall, an outcome I would hope with the alternative response program is to have a resource available for the community to have that alternative response when they're in need. So when there's a mental health crisis, that there can be mental health professionals who are called out, just like if there's a fire, there will be fire response or medical emergency to send medical professionals.
Jan.
Can we just get clarification of what the format looks like? Really respect your time. I just want to make sure that procedurally, we're doing this correctly.
That's fine.
Procedurally, you are okay. I definitely, was under the impression that there is a presentation portion of this as well, but it is a focus group, and we definitely want to make sure that they're here and they're getting the feedback that they're supposed to. But procedurally, you are fine.
Go ahead, Jaya.
Thanks. And thanks for your patience as we work through the logistics and for being here. I do want to just, you know, before we get too far down the road, I do want to acknowledge the work that Supervisor Tenawith and Grace have done to get you guys here, too, right? That Shonar and I had an idea about this over, like, what, five years ago? And so I think it is a good question, right? And I will say for myself that part of the impetus for creating a process was that we weren't coming in with a preconceived notion, right? That we had a proposal put in front of us for a co-response model that, from my perspective and I think from some other community members' perspectives, didn't have a good argument for why that model, right? So I think, you know, I appreciate what you're saying here of, like, let's have those conversations with our community, let's hear from stakeholders, and folks who might not be, you know, able to be at some of those meetings, but who will still want to make sure that we're getting that input so that as we create something, it is specific to this community. So I echo what Grace said in terms of it, you know, being the appropriate response to the appropriate need. But I can say for myself that part of what I'm hoping for from this is that we're not predefining what our alternate response looks like, but that we're using best practice and knowledge that we gain through this process, which has been starting and stopping over a number of years to make sure that we're trying our best to design something that serves the unique needs of this community.
James.
Thank you. And thank you, Dee, and chief. It's good to see you guys again. Really appreciated the time you made for us back when you presented online and then did a follow-up. It's very useful. I've got a good news, bad news thing for you. Good news is, you're asking people who've been thinking about this a long time, right? So we should have answers about what we're expecting from this, because it's been four and a half, five years. Bad news is, you should have given us the questions in advance. So we would come with our list, because we're also good at that. But I will, I will say, you know, the expectation is that in support of what Grace mentions, of having the right resource for the right need, we will be able to respond to those calls with those resources and take calls for service off of the police response process, which is a very expensive way to manage every call that comes in. So it's not only a better service for the people who need it, it's also a better value for the community in how they're putting their resources towards what they need to do. I think that's an important need. I have some expectations that are not limited to the City of Urbana, though, because this is a need that doesn't recognize which side of Wright Street it's on. So I'm hoping in this process, we can develop ideas that can either be collaborated with or shared with our neighboring communities and are encircling municipal responsibilities so that we can do it in a way that doesn't look at which side of the Wright Street things happen on. We've been told time and time again that a lot of the things that we need to support with an alternative response, and it's true, is not something that follows the lines of the city or the specific resources that we've drawn them out to be over the last 180 years. So that's one of the things that I'm expecting from this, that we will be able to put our resources to the right place, and that we'll do this as a community as opposed to one municipality.
Mary Alice.
So I have to say, I agree with everything that everybody has already said. I want to expand on one of them, which is talking about getting the right resource to the person when they need it. I think one of the things that we see is we see consistent phone calls about issues with a particular individual, particular house, that doesn't really get addressed, right? They just keep getting these calls for service and so forth. I'd love to be able to break that pattern and find a resolution that works for that person, rather than this constant crisis reaction. So I wanted to bring that up. And then the other thing that people haven't talked about, and I know it's not as top of mind for some people, we've been talking a lot about mental health and substance abuse, but I also like to look at items that, you know, for lack of a better phrase, the police get the kitchen sink, right? They get everything. They get the barking dog. They get the trash cans left out. I mean, those things, we don't really need to be sending a police officer. So some of those other things that aren't directly related to mental health or substance abuse, I would like for that to be looked at as well.
Mayor, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think the question of, you know, what outcomes, you know, we would like to see from the response. I think, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but, you know, just tangible evidence that, you know, the very folks that we're wanting to protect are feeling protected. Whatever that, you know, whatever that looks like from you guys' standpoint, right? If we're saying that we're, you know, wanting to take on the mental health cause and, you know, eliminate the police from having to go out to these, you know, these calls, I would like to see, you know, some form of tangible evidence that folks are actually feeling safer in that, you know, capacity. I think that's a very simple way in saying whether or not it works.
I would like to, first of all, thank, just finally see LEAP. I met you guys in 2004, so I'm really grateful that you're here. The very, the consultants before you identified the calls for, 61% of the calls for service were non-criminal issues. So the first outcome I'm hoping for from this alternative, I don't know if we can get up to 61%, but I would like to see a definite reduction in officer workload, definite reduction. This job, and the alderperson who just said, the kitchen sink is true. They get everything, and they don't need to be at everything. And so I'm hoping that this alternative response will take a significant workload off our police department. Second, I'm hoping is that our alternative response will have some expertise in the various life issues of poverty, mental, I call it mental stress, but we want to call it mental illness, okay. Homelessness. Have some kind of ability to engage those kind of folks. The challenge, and I think alderperson Quisenberry has said it well, that he was alluding to, is going to be, I want, the outcome that I would like to see is that this alternative response is resourced to where, they don't just show up empty-handed to talk pretty for an hour or two, but they have actual, seeing Sergeant McKinney in the back there, we've talked about the swipe program, where there's a credit card and they can swipe resources. That's not on you, that's on us. But a recommendation from you to, like, what would be needed, when you come upon a homeless person who's stressed out and bothering the business, what's the next move, really? Because the citizens want that solved in some kind of way. I'm not telling you things that you don't already know, but the outcome I'm hoping for somehow, some way, is a resourced alternative response, to where the action can actually happen that night, that week, that month, to connect a person to all the programs and resources and organizations and all that. Yeah, I'm gonna just stop there. Grace.
Thanks. Circle back around, and thank you all very much for being here. Very excited. A little thrown off guard with how we're doing things. So very glad to see you here. I'm glad this is finally happening, moving forward. And I'll also echo, I think, Jay's important point about, you know, keeping it open, that that's, you know, why we want you here, for your expertise and to gather that community input and working with the city infrastructure as is, and then also our community partners on the task force. I think there's maybe been some confusion on what this task force entails, if they would be the people actually responding to the situations, which they may be, but I think that's not necessarily the case, yet to be determined. But what I, my understanding of what we've created with this task force is representatives from, I believe, 12 community organizations that are people on the ground, dealing with people who are experiencing homelessness and mental health issues and a lot of the kinds of calls for services. So I think that that's also a big piece of it, is that we've already assembled some of our community leaders and experts to be a part of that conversation with you, and then we're hoping that you come back to us with the idea. So that's why I think a little thrown off guard, too, of like, what do we want? We're like, we want you here to, like, work with the community, to tell us what we should think about. So just wanted to articulate that a little more. Thank you.
Yes, and I know that probably did throw you for a loop, but if we came here and we were like, hey, this is what you guys should do without ever talking to the task force or even just knowing what outcomes you want, we probably would design something that you guys don't want. For example, with you mentioning those calls that are more related to conflict resolution versus substance use and mental health, what if we came in here and was like, hey, guys, let's do a mental health program, we'll get a clinician, a social worker, and you're like, wait, that's not the bulk of the cause, right? So I genuinely... So I genuinely think what I've heard so far from everyone really helps us get a better understanding of, of the goals of the program and what you all are interested in. So with that being said, if there isn't any more responses to the first question, I would like us to move on to the second one.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Hey, what concerns do you have about creating an alternate response program?
And if you don't have any concerns, are there any concerns that you anticipate from your constituents?
James.
So I do have some concerns. In fact, Chief, that's what I wanted to talk to you about a couple of, of a year and change ago, which was going into this process, we have to understand that it'll be a collaboration of the different components of response for it to work. My question for you, when I, when I followed up with you was, how do these things work with the police in these communities? And I think you had very positive things to tell me about that, but as we put this together, we're going to have to recognize that there will be collaboration across these lines and we have to, we have to develop, you know, a trust and a capability there that people will work with it. And so that is a thing that I'm concerned with, that we won't, we won't be able to develop that trust and it won't be integrated, and that will not get us to where we need to go. I want to, we're always concerned about how we finance things. We talk about that a lot. I think there's a will and an interest in this council to support that. But when we do it, I'm concerned that it will, we'll see us try to build something and Champaign try to build something and Champaign County try to build something. And the UIPD has already tried to do something with regard to this, and, and we'll be doing it four different ways or four different times. And that would be great from a standpoint of having a lot of resources pointed at it, but that's pretty high overhead from an administrative standpoint because each one of those groups will have their, you know, office support, their, their command group, however they organize that. If we're doing that four times, we're not going to be spending the people's money in the best way possible to get the results that we want. So that, that's another thing I'm concerned about.
Mary Als.
So I took some time and I, I looked at your Evanston report and in terms of resources you had suggested that the city invest in and how to roll it out and so forth. And one thing that I liked about it, and it's, it's given me some food for thought, is yes, it would be great to have kind of a proposal of this is what you would need to do to have an alternative response group working 24/7 like we do the police, but at the same time, rolling it out in stages, right? Trying to, to figure out what works best in our community. I would like to see that phased approach because I think that will allow for us to be able to recalibrate.
Yeah. I will say, since you're doing your research, our Rochester report has a phased approach where we recommend that they implement the program in two phases. So if you want to see how we did that, you could take a look, but we can have a formal conversation about it if you have more questions.
And do you mind if I say something in response to Mr. Quisenberry? Do you mind if I say something in response to Mr. Quisenberry? I think he made a really good point. This is a collaboration, and I think in cities where I've seen this be successful, there's a culture in that city where they appreciate and value all responses. What the police department does is special, and you can't, the fire department can't imitate that, alternate responders can't imitate that. They do some things that others can't. Same with the fire department. What they do is unique and special, and we need to appreciate both of those. And at the same hand, at the same time, when we are able to build a successful alternate response model, we'll be able to respect and appreciate them as well and how they work as a team and collaborate with other stakeholders in the city in order to be able to make sure that public safety at its grassroots level is, is best as we can, you can have it here in Urbana. And I think it's important to understand that what you said, the collaboration and the recognition of how important all the, all the different stakeholders or the responders for public safety are involved is, is really, really important. So I just wanted to double down on that before we moved on. Yep.
Jay.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm going to reinforce some of the concerns that have already been expressed. One is that we're able to figure out funding in a meaningful way, right? Not just a token, not just a like, we checked that box, we did that thing, we have it on paper, but that actually means something. And I do think, you know, especially thinking about our current political environment, which of course a lot of folks have brought up during public comment today, you know, this is the kind of thing that we would love to be able to say, we're going to go after a grant from the federal government to support this work. We're not in that world, right? So I think not only thinking about the funding implications, but also like, what does it mean to be trying to do this work that needs to be done, that again, we've been trying to do for a long time, but in this political environment in a way that we're also thinking about what might any safety implications be for our task force, for our community members as we work on rolling this out? I think we have to, we have to be mindful about that. You know, you mentioned your work with immigrant communities in Ohio, and, and I do appreciate that. Like, I'm very grateful for you sharing that and for the work that you're doing there. Certainly our service providers that are serving especially undocumented folks in this community are really struggling, not to mention that the folks who are actually undocumented, right? So their voices are just as important. I know I say this all the time, but it's not just the citizens, it's the residents of this community that we serve. So thinking about how do we do that? How do we make sure that we're engaging in this process in a way that is acknowledging the, the very real fear and pain that people are experiencing right now is another aspect of this too. So there's that piece, but I do also kind of want to come back to, you know, the piece about the various stakeholders and thinking about buy-in, right? That what I appreciate and part of the reason that we, we are with a different consultant is that we made it very clear, this council made it very clear, that this needed to be a transparent process where community members had the opportunity to participate. And I think that's hopefully going to alleviate some of that concern that I have, but, you know, I think as folks have already raised, we're not going to come up with a solution that is the perfect fit for what everybody wants, right? But my goal in this is figuring out, how do we get something that is a good, appropriate fit for Urbana, that people feel like they were able to participate in, that we do have the buy-in that's necessary to make it successful? So that's kind of like a concern slash, here's where I think we, we need to go in order to alleviate some of that concern.
Mayor Williams.
Yeah, I think piggybacking off of what Jay is saying too, you know, because there's, there's a lot of excitement, right? And, and community is engaged, they're ready, this has been long overdue, this, that and the third. I think one of my main concerns is ensuring that, you know, it doesn't, you know, fall, like, that, that community input, that community base does, we don't lose sight of that, right? As years go on, you know, and then it, because of the community excitement dies down, it becomes a normal thing, then it falls into some, you know, random space. I think that's going to be something that we will want to ensure, you know, that the community stays, you know, at the forefront of, of this, however we move forward with that.
Grace.
Just agree with what's been expressed. There are too many concerns. I think that Jay already articulated well about federal funding and safety concerns. Yeah, I think money is a big concern for me because we currently don't have money in the budget for operating or reoccurring these expenses in the long term. So that's a very big piece of the conversation, and I think it's a great idea to work countywide, and that would be great, but also I have concerns about that holding up the process because I'm also willing to move forward alone if the other entities aren't at that point yet.
I would offer some concerns. By the way, Grace, I thought we had 300,000 allocated for this alternative response, but we can visit that conversation later. One of the big concerns that's been raised is that how safe is an alternative response program? And when it becomes unsafe, do the alternative responders want to quit? From your experience, let's put it that way.
Yes, I'll, I'll answer that one right now, since we're going to have Q and As later, but is that, is that okay with you guys if I talk about that one real quick? Okay. So I'm going to answer the second one first. I have been to alternate response conferences. Last one was in Omaha, Nebraska last year. They had discussions and talks about all kinds of things, but one of them wasn't, nor did I hear any discussions about people quitting because it was unsafe. Now that being said, that being said, I've hired police officers before that have quit because they thought, wow, I didn't realize this was what it was really like. It's different than the academy and what you see on TV. You know, people get hired into all different sorts of jobs. My wife's a nurse, you know, people in fire, medics, all kinds of first response where you're potentially dealing with somebody in trauma. It's not unheard of for somebody to say, that wasn't what I thought it was, that's not for me. So I think in order to be able to retain people, doing the best you can upfront and educating them on what the job is, is the best way to be able to retain them. So once you hire them, they know what they're getting into. In my experience, most people left because they didn't like the hours or the days off and, or maybe they didn't like their pay, or sometimes people just wanted to change jobs and do something different. So that's my experience is what usually happens, but in any type of job, especially when you're dealing with people in crisis, sometimes people do step into that space and say, oof, that, that wasn't for me. And so I get that. The second is, is how safe is it? You know, one of the things I think about it, like, how safe is anything right now? But what I will say is there has been over a half a million calls for service with alternate responders over the last couple of years, and up until very recently, there was no reported over the last couple of years that I am aware of. And after being in the conferences and talking to people that represent thousands of people and thousands of calls, any deaths or serious injuries? And if you think about it, people, social workers are in and out of people's homes all the time, people going out to people's homes on things that are controversial all the time, and we're not hearing about them being, you know, hurt on a frequent basis. So not saying that, you know, any job that you do, there's always a, a chance for danger and there's always an opportunity for somebody to get hurt, and especially when you're dealing with people in crisis, you would think that would be elevated. And so it is possible that someone could have harm in, in any job you do, but in this one, just like a doctor or nurse, somebody who's dealing with people in crisis, it could be elevated. But I think that programs have done a good job training. They do a lot of training with first responders, they do a lot of training in de-escalation. The programs that we've advised on, they have equipment, you know, police radios, police computers, so they can recognize and step away and call for help if they need to, and call screening is very, very important. So equipment, call screening, and the training helps minimize the risk. But it would be disingenuous if I said, there's no possible way anybody could ever get hurt in this job, just, or if you were a teacher, or if you were a healthcare worker, I mean, it can happen, it can happen, and it's unfortunate. But we live in a world where sometimes people just do harmful things that you didn't expect to happen.
Anybody else have any concerns? Okay. Okay, I think you can go to your third question.
Okay. What kind of information would be particularly helpful in making decisions about an alternate response program?
I'm going to start it if nobody else will. I, I would like to know, for a town of our size, and after you've analyzed our calls for service, how many people do we need and what is the equipment? Obviously, I know you're going to provide us a menu of models, but could you kind of narrow it down to what would work in Urbana and the dreaded word cost, of course, will have to be looked at too. Grace.
I really like information, so I don't turn out to just have a long, random list, but pretty much as much as you can give us on, yeah, best practices, your past experiences and lessons learned and what you learned from the task force and your community input, what you've seen as the benefits in other cities. Yeah, and some of the recommendations, especially with particularly some options, you know, might be good, whatever you and the task force come up with, but depending on our availability and scale and phases and budgets, that having some different options along with whatever information you can provide, I won't say no to any other information.
And I will, I'll kind of answer both those real quick. We will be doing that. We have almost 90 different departments that have responder programs that we'll be consulting with, and there are a variety of different sizes, big cities to small college towns, that we'll be able to help glean information from them, and we'll be able to help give some options. And after, between that and screen, the call evaluation and being able to talk to your community, we'll be able to give you a, a good menu.
And if I can add to that really quickly, I would highly encourage everyone here to go on our website. We just had released a map of existing community responder programs, so you can see the, some of the regional trends, the type of calls, the responders of these different programs, and, and I think you'll enjoy seeing the different, how, how different these programs are.
Mayor Williams.
I was just going to say, I know that we've, you know, touched on it like on a surface level, but, you know, just details, details in, in regards to how you all will, you know, address, you know, the, the systematic issues and things of that nature. I, I think homelessness, racism, all of those things, how those things will be implemented, you know, in detail from you all's, you know, approach, I think will be, you know, also important information for us as well.
Jay.
While I'm still thinking that over, because I, I'm also like, all the information. I just have a request, I guess more from city staff or the clerk, that if we could post that link to the resource you just mentioned for our community members. And especially make sure that the alternate response task force members get it. I'm not exactly sure when that first meeting is going to be, but I think having the opportunity, you know, not everyone's going to have the time to do the deep dive, but if they want to, that if we can help facilitate that, I think that would be beneficial so that folks are coming in with more information if they want to.
A hundred percent, we can make that happen. But that's actually why the map came out, because we were like, we know people don't have time to read a long report. So I think for those who need something more efficient and quick and easy on the eyes, the map will help them out.
So this is kind of a big ask, so you can feel free to say no. You know, we, when we had the Barry Dunn report and they went through the calls for service and they, they kind of categorized things between criminal and non-criminal, one thing that struck me was that categorization didn't necessarily say anything about the danger of that activity, right? And, and this speaks a little bit to it, and I, I completely appreciate your example of, you know, all these different professions face people in trauma and crisis and so forth. But I feel like some of the non-criminal things could be dangerous and really kind of understanding that play between, I'll use barking dog for example, right? Barking dog is not that dangerous usually, but if it's, if it's jumping over the fence and attacking people, that's dangerous, right? So it would be great, as we talk about these different calls for service that a potential alternative response could respond to, what does that spectrum look like in terms of danger and not dangerous? But as I said, I know it's a big ask, so.
The answer's a yes. We do do that.
Okay, excellent.
So what Barry Dunn did was they, they took all of the categories of calls for service and put them in criminal and non-criminal sections. But that doesn't really tell the whole story because as you said, there are a lot of calls for service that, you know, let's say it's Atlanta, a disorderly subject might mean one thing. Here it might be something else in Urbana, might be something- one thing, here it might be something else in Urbana, might be something completely different in Gary, Indiana. So, what we do is we not only take the calls for service and break those down into categories, but we look at the call narratives. So, we take a lot of time. We look at a big subset of the call narratives in the individual calls for service that are under question. So, we can find out when Urbana dispatches a barking dog, what does that really mean in Urbana? Like, if 90% of the time it means a dog, a pit bull's chasing people around the street, then we know that's not good for an alternate responder. Same thing with disorderly conduct. Some people disorderly conduct could be somebody that's homeless and they're sleeping on a park bench, but to some jurisdictions, that might mean they're actively fighting at a bar. So, we need to understand more than just what does the label mean, but what's behind it? And then we'll be able to look at those percentages and be able to say, okay, 98% of the time you have a barking dog, there's no police action and it really is just a barking dog. And so, how do we look to screen things when there is a dog actually on the loose biting people? So, um, the answer's yes. We do do a much, much deeper dive because we do need those answers. Those answers are important.
Thank you.
And we will give the deeper dive to the task force as well and have them review some of the call narratives on their own and assess whether this is something that they think is appropriate for an armed or unarmed response. And every single one gets read. Every sample of data we send, it gets read by all of us on the team and we assess the level of danger. Like, if there's, obviously if there's a gun present, we're like, oh, no, right? But if it's, uh, there's been calls where it's like a mother is pleading for her child's safety. And doing this work, I never imagined how emotional I would get reading 911 narratives, but reading the calls and why people call 911 is one of the reasons why I do this work.
And, and we do want feedback. We want feedback from community members, we want feedback from you, we want feedback from the police department and fire department to be able to say, now, this call needed an armed responder. Then people are coming to, you know, uh, you know, somewhat of an agreement. Or this one doesn't need an armed responder, you know? You got two people that are upset about somebody mowed somebody's grass, you know, too far, and the police might even say, yeah, we're just gonna go there for 45 minutes and listen to people yell at each other, you know? Maybe we need something different. So, um, we make sure that holistically, we don't keep those a secret. We let everybody get a chance to look at those as well and, and see what does Urbana want? Cause you might want something different than Knoxville, Tennessee wants, or you might want something different than, uh, Milwaukee, Wisconsin wants. And that's what's important, is what does your community want?
I guess, um, I, I think one of the pieces of information that you're going to give us is the design of the model. So, when we talk about whether a call is dangerous or not, situations, as you know, chief, is, they're always fluid, right? They can change into, you know, this was one thing and it, it started out as one thing and it became something else. So, communication devices, um, being, you know, what is protocol when things change and what are the options for alternative responder, responders when they see something that maybe is beyond their level of expertise and ability? The other, uh, thing that's striking to me that's, and I'm sure you've dealt with this, is training the dispatchers to know who to send. I think that's gonna be huge. Um, MedCAD listening, when I say MedCAD, it's Metropolitan Dispatch, Computer-Aided Dispatch, but it's our system that we put calls out. And they need to know what to do when they get, when they get that call narrative, right? So, that, I don't know what access little old Urbana has to the MedCAD world, but we're gonna need them in as one of the stakeholders. And that means also Barry Dunn was able to somehow get access to all of MedCAD's data. And I don't know what your access is going to be, so I'm curious how that's gonna work out. That's for you to figure out, I guess, and let us know if there's difficulty, but that you're gonna do call narratives, you're gonna need to, MedCAD's gonna have to provide that for you.
Thankfully, shout out to our people again who have been working very diligently, here. We have the data that we need and our team will get working on it once, in like, in the couple of days is what I'll say, but, uh, we, we got what we need so far. And if we have any concerns, our people are on it, to be honest. I have been so happy with, with the level of collabora, collaboration so far.
Good to hear. Anything else?
Councilman Evans, to that, you know, in Dayton, Ohio, which is where I did most my policing, in that area, not the Dayton Police Department, but my last office was right across the street from their mediation response unit, and their chief and I had lunch together quite a bit and discussed it. And, um, they, the alternate responders ended up calling for police help. It was less than 3% of the time, um, saying, hey, this wasn't the right call for us. In some cities, it's like less than 1%, like in big cities like Denver and Durham, it's less than 1% of the time. So, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I think, um, equally, there was a lot of times that the police would go on a call and say, ooh, wait a second here. Uh, this is more of a long-term problem-solving issue. We really don't need a police officer here. We're gonna hand this off to an alternate responder. Now, in my experience, after 30 years in policing, there was plenty of calls. I would have, if I had the option to say, let me hand it off to a person that's gonna be able to have expertise in connecting them to resources and I can just go on and, and, you know, either build relationships in the community or work on criminal activity, I would have been ecstatic. I didn't have that, you know? But a lot of times the police will hand over, that's why it's so important to have that collaboration, to have that respect, to be able to really value everybody who is attending to public safety, so you can hand things off back and forth. And that happens probably more than 3% where the police will hand it off to the community responders.
Okay, I think you're, you have the floor to finish up then.
Well, we just wanted to end with some questions and answers if you guys had more questions for us. I know you started asking some in the middle of the focus group.
Here's where you can get us back. And we got some secret questions for you. Yes, ma'am.
Grace?
Just wondering, um, next steps, I guess you told us a bit about, um, some of the data analysis and meeting with the task force, and then especially in regards to like when, as council and the general public, we could expect to hear back?
That was our next slide. So, as we've mentioned, uh, we did receive, uh, the 911 calls for service, and so we will start working on doing that call narrative analysis. We have also set, um, at least put the first three dates on the calendar for meeting with the alternative task force. I might be wrong, I think it's the ninth of, or the sixth of November, I think it's the first one. And so, in that first initial meeting, um, we'll be presenting that preliminary data and, as well as conducting virtual interviews with task force members, as well as people who they connect us to, that's community members, colleagues, whoever, you know, can provide us with a professional and personal experience to really help shape these recommendations, those are all the people that we wanna be speaking to. So, those are some of our formal, um, next steps. And I don't think we've, uh, communicated how we'll engage with city council thus far, but, uh, that's a conversation Tarek and I will have this upcoming week or next.
Grace?
Thank you so much for the information there. Um, other question, um, kind of broader, was wondering about LEAP's general kinds of services and advising on cities on, um, I've noticed that some of the cities you've worked in also have things like, um, oversight ordinances for surveillance, and I didn't know if you work in any realms as far as other city services outside of alternative response and kind of whole or holistic picture of city and law enforcement.
Yeah, we have not weighed in on, um, technology on cities would use for surveillance. We have not weighed in on that. That's not, that has not been part of the alternate response program. But I have watched your last couple of city council meetings, so I do know that that's a big deal here.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? I will say, um, go ahead, Mary Alice, I'm sorry.
So, I know that you'll be, um, working with the task force and, and, um, doing sort of processes. Will there be a draft report that the community will be able to look at and provide feedback on before you present your final findings?
So, we will have a draft, we will present a preliminary report to the task force, um, and I believe we have some community member, community meetings, uh, within the scope as well, so yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I think it's like two, right? Okay, I'm not the contract girl, okay? I don't remember all the details.
Do you probably are going to do this, but I just wanna, um, emphasize that it would be nice if we had advance time when things are getting scheduled so that the public can be alerted to come. Although, we've, we've decided that they won't be able to participate in the, in the, in the meetings with the stakeholders and the task force in the sense of asking questions or doing that, cause there's not enough time, these are 90-minute meetings. They are able to do emails, I don't, didn't wanna say nothing, but they, they're able to provide input through emails and stuff, but they would like to be here to watch you all work. So, um, any advance warning you can give us, uh, lead time, maybe that's for the city clerk to know too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I figured.
We'll get it together, a hundred percent, and, and I, I wanna make it very clear that community engagement is, is super important to us, and I highly encourage everyone to, to email, um, set up calls with us, like, we genuinely want to hear everyone's personal and professional experiences to shape these recommendations.
Okay.
Certainly, don't wanna step on toes, but I can perhaps expand a little bit, um, upon that. So, the intent is that agendas and a packet that will include, um, prior community feedback received at city council, which is where we are directing folks, since we are time-bound at the alternative response task force meetings, that they are only 90, uh, minutes and they are during the day. We recognize that that is probably not conducive to verbal input at that time. However, um, we are encouraging folks to come to city council meetings and I will get everything up there early so folks know exactly when the city council meetings are, well in advance. Similarly, in the same way that we publish our city council agendas, no less than 48 hours ahead of the meeting, along with those packets, the alternative response task force meetings will be advertised in the exact same fashion that our council meetings are on our website and posted here. So, if you're able to follow the council stuff, you should be able to equally access, um, the alternative response stuff. So, the public feedback received will, of course, go in the city council minutes, just as it normally does, um, for the meetings that it's received, but if it is alternative response feedback, I'm also, since the meetings are going to be on Thursdays and our council meets on Mondays, going to compile that and include it in the alternative response task force packets as well. So, our task force members are also able to access that, uh, verbal input that we receive at council meetings. We are also accepting written input, that can be either via email to our city council email group, um, if it is alternative response task force. Obviously, I'm going to filter them for content as well, but if folks could also indicate that it's task force intended input, that would be helpful for me in terms of like culminating everything. But it's going to be displayed in two different places at all times, basically, uh, for each meeting. So, we're gonna try really hard to keep it all organized and not have you guys worry about that. We've got it.
Thank you, Queen. I, I appreciate you, and you're not stepping on my toes at all, cause you explained that way better than I could.
Grace?
Thanks for the clarification, and I think that is a really important point, too, that we've decided as a city and very happy that you've agreed to following, um, Open Meetings Act regulations and being accessible to the public. And so, if I just clarify, so you're saying at the task force meetings, because it's time-bound, it will be written input only?
Correct, and it won't, it won't be read out, um, but they will be compiled and included publicly and given to the task force members and the council both. So, everybody's gonna have the same information at the same time, in real time, and it will be recorded in a way that will be easier for our analysts to, to summarize and utilize too.
And, um, encouraging people if they want to give verbal input to do that at the council meetings, right? Or also email, um, just to council, is there a separate email for input for this or just to city council?
Presently, the intention was just city council, um, because the city council email group already copies the clerk's office, so I don't have to track down council members to ask them to forward me input. Um, I'm automatically getting those emails too, so.
Makes sense, and, um, and that's in compliance with OMA? If we amend the rules for public input, is that how, that's okay?
So, we wouldn't be amending the rules for public input, it would be the traditional city council public input rules. I'm just basically making that public input available additionally in their packets. Presently, we can receive public input, um, prior to meetings. Folks frequently send written public input as soon as the packets go out or even before the packets go out, ahead of Monday meetings, uh, via written. Obviously, we're not assembled in the same way, so it's not verbal input, um, cause the meetings only happen on Mondays for council, but, yeah.
But you're saying it's okay with OMA to not have any opportunity for verbal public input at that meeting?
So, the alternative response task force is not bound by OMA, um, it is not considered a subsidiary body of the city council. There's five criteria that is considered when applying the OMA standards, like regulatory wise to bodies, and the alternative response task force does not meet those. However, um, council passed a resolution encouraging and, and demanding that, um, the task force be as compliant with OMA as possible. And so, they are open to the public, the public can attend them, they can provide feedback. We're incorporating that feedback, we just aren't unfortunately able to have, uh, verbal input at those meetings.
And I assure you, that is a good thing, cause our contract and I, we never got to the end of the slides, so I assure you, not having public comment verbally at least will allow us to get through all of the content, to...
Which makes sense with the time constraints, and I appreciate the clarification. And, um, hopefully people are okay with emailing stuff or doing their public input on Monday nights. But that is a really important piece, is that we wanted to have it as accessible and in compliance with OMA as possible. And also wanted to just, um, highlight and appreciate, um, express appreciation for the website and the yard signs people have maybe hopefully seen around, and it seems like that will be the kind of main place to compile any updates as they come along. Is that right? Thank you.
One last thing, sorry, and then I'll, I'll get off my little soapbox of public input. If folks don't have access to email or computers, written input can be delivered to the clerk's office, we're open eight to five, Monday through Friday. I'm also going to be attending all of the alternative response task force meetings too, so if you write public input, if you don't have access to computer, that's also okay. It's any form of written input.
Okay, looks like, uh, that ends that portion. Any, anything else you'd like to say or do?
Are you done?
Yeah, I'd just say thank you very much for inviting us in and welcoming us to Urbana to be able to walk with you guys through this. I think you'll be happy when it's over, um, and we're gonna be very happy to be able to serve you guys. And I appreciate, uh, the, the comments and questions you guys had, I appreciate the comments that I, you know, heard earlier from, from your, uh, your citizens, and, um, I appreciated big time watching our, our fire department swear some people in, and I'm very thankful that your police chief is here, um, and as well, supporting this effort, so I appreciate it.
One last thing, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to make sure that they get a, a link to the video of this meeting so that you can look back at both public comment and what we asked and said, and you'll be able to, uh, remember the conversation a little better, so, um, if, you know, or give me their contact and I'll send it to them, either way. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to, yeah, go ahead. Brings us to council input and communications. Mayor?
I just want to, uh, remind everyone that the mayor, I hate to end the name, Mayor Williams Financial Literacy Program, um, the registration for the citywide financial literacy program is open until October 10th, so please, 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 um, if you are looking for, um, financial literacy, um, just training, we have a six-week, uh, six-course program that, um, it's, it's all mobile, um, it's, it's self-paced, um, and, and just a, a really good training opportunity, uh, for you to, you know, just develop your, your financial knowledge and whatnot. So, um, registration open until October 10th. Uh, if you have questions, thoughts, or concerns... If you have questions, thoughts, or concerns, please visit the website or go to go.urbanail.gov/finlit. Thank you.
Grace.
Say thanks for people who've come out tonight and shared input and supported a lot of these issues over the years. And just take a few minutes on this platform to just acknowledge some of the horrifying crimes against humanity currently being committed globally in genocide and nationally, that currently Chicago is under federal invasion and that people have been raided and dragged out of their homes in the middle of the night. Police in Chicago have been attacked by federal agents. They arrested a city council member there in a hospital. And I think a lot of people, we got, you know, one written input tonight, but have definitely heard from a lot of others of, you know, what's, what's next if Urbana is the next target, and how do we prepare locally? So I was encouraged to see an example from Chicago with an executive order on how to handle potential invasion by federal officers, National Guard, military, or any other armed forces. I think this was also interesting reminder with the police promotions, and that all of us up here and all of our city staff swore an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the US and the state, and to act rightfully for the citizens, and as I love to remind us often, the residents of Urbana. And we all took that oath, and what does that mean? And we had this kind of talk in May, when we were all sworn in, and what might be involved in really committing to that. And feels like every day, it gets higher and higher stakes and a realer and realer possibility that we will be directly impacted next. So looking to that, I would like to request discussion for next week, that anybody could second now, or I'll get to the clerk if they want to later, on a similar kind of executive order and how we prepare for things in Urbana. There's already been a draft from a community member already sent. So I think a lot of the legwork, we can look to other examples and what we think is right for Urbana. So for next week, especially since we have a light consent agenda, it looks like, I would like to add a discussion, again, with a second, whenever that time comes, for executive orders potentially on how to handle potential federal invasion. We might think of a better title, but that's what I've got so far. And then also, I'd like to add another discussion to continue on the surveillance ordinance, just to keep that going. So if anyone's interested in seconding tonight or in a later thing, we'll get that into the clerk.
I'd like to second putting both of those items on the agenda as discussion items for next week. And I think, yeah, just, I will say that I was also the, you know, having the privilege of seeing other folks in the city sworn in. It, yeah, it hits hard right now, that it is something people should take seriously. So thinking about what we can do to keep this community safe in all of our respective roles, and, you know, what it, what it means to actually respect that commitment that we, we all have taken. And other people in this country are not respecting those, that they have taken to defend our Constitution and work to better it, right? Like, that's the other piece, too, right? Like, how do we continue to better things? So I would like to have those conversations, to think about not only what we can do, but I think also think about, yeah, what is coming. My heart just goes out to everyone in Chicago right now.
Okay, so city clerk, you have direction, yeah, okay. Well, with nothing else, then, we are adjourned. Thank you.